Our 7:30 has come and actually passed us by a little bit here. We're sorry we're a few minutes late, but I'd like to call to order this business meeting of District 116 for October 15th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Member Exum?
Here.
Member Patton?
Here.
Member Plasky?
Here.
Member Fisher is here. And President Demmett?
Here. We do have a quorum present, and we're hopefully expecting the other two at some point here.
Well, Ann is gone. We know Ann's out of town.
Ann's out of town. All right. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to this evening's agenda? We'll then move to citizen statements. If any citizen wishes to address the board, please fill out a Goldenrod sheet and hand it to our recording secretary. We do have one this evening. David, if you want to go ahead. You know the routine about how to turn on the mic and stuff.
Good evening, President Demmett and members of the USD 116 Board. We want to thank you and Mayor Marlin and City of Urbana for extensive efforts over the past year to ensure the safety and security of our educators, students in Urbana schools. Many may not know that Mayor Marlin and the city have generously covered the cost of two full-time SROs sent shortly after the mob action that shut down Urbana High School on February 5th of last year. While we were unable to attend the study session on October 1st, we observed the meeting courtesy UPTV and wanted to again express our appreciation to Dr. Jennifer Ivory Tatum, Mayor Marlin, Urbana Police Chief Seraphin, Deputy Chief Searls, and Officer Robinson for the extremely thorough proposal to rework our current Student Resource Officer SRO model in Urbana schools. Most impactful were the best practices figures quoted from the National Association of School Resource Officers. Per the proposal, best practices dictates a ratio of one full-time SRO to 1,000 students. We were shocked to learn that our previous ratio of one half-time SRO to 4,322 students falls questionably short of best practices standards across the country. We are also likewise encouraged to hear that the proposed reworking of the SRO model to employ one full-time SRO at each campus of Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School brings the safety, security of our schools in alignment with national standards. As Chief Seraphin mentioned during the presentation, considering the reality of increasing headlines detailing our own Urbana youth involved in gun violence over the past year, coupled with last week's headline regarding a loaded gun and ammunition found on school property at Centennial High School, we urge the board to vote for the SRO proposal as presented at the last study session on October 1st, 2019. The other piece of this that I would add is that approving that proposal also helps ensure that we have continuity between the community, policing, and also ensuring the safety during the school week with our students and building those relationships between the SROs and the students and identifying issues ahead of time through those relationships. And I think that's critical. Thank you for honoring your commitment to a safe environment conducive to learning for our educators and students. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay. Linda?
Hi. Linda Minor of Urbana. I just want to piggyback on to the well-thought-out statement that Mr. Guth presented, but I'd like to also add, I was surprised about the best practice statistics. And if there's anything that we've learned about the generosity of the city providing us with two full-time officers at each of our middle school and high school since chaos broke out last spring, we seem to be learning and having a safe environment again and less disruptions. And I just want to remind you, the board, you are charged with keeping a safe environment for all of our students, all of our teachers. And this is an opportunity for us to work together. I know it's not just the school's problem, it's a society problem, and we have to work together. However, the piece that the board owns of this, you are charged with keeping our campus safe, our students, giving them a learning environment in which they can learn with no chaos. So you have to own that piece. So I know it's expensive, but the world is a different place. I wish we didn't have to do this. You have to pick and choose what your priorities are, and you are charged, it's your responsibility to make sure that the school is conducive to learning and safe, and we have to respond to the ways this generation, the problems of this generation have. It's just the way it is. And as Mr. Guth pointed out of what happened in Unit 4 last week, this is our reality. And if you're not in touch with this reality, then maybe you shouldn't be serving in this capacity if you're not willing to put as a priority to make the decisions that need to be made with the priority of keeping things safe. So I support the two full-time SROs, one for the middle school and one for the high school. You should too. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? While we're giving you an opportunity to think that through, I'd like to thank Austin Pontius and Erin Lubansky for operating the cameras for us this evening so the folks at home can watch us on TV. Anyone else wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. We have no call for an exec session this evening, so we need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved in second at all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We have no commendations or recognitions this evening, nor a public hearing, nor communications, although we have all received various emails from members of the community. Administrative reports, we're ready to move forward to the audit. So are you starting it, Jennifer, or is Carol?
Sure. I'd be happy to invite Heather Powell up front. She's going to present the audit for the fiscal year, 1819. And you'll see a recurring theme throughout that you'll probably notice, so I'll let her explain.
Unfortunately, I'll probably sound a little bit like a broken record.
And you have at your place, everybody.
There you go. Okay, so you also do have a hard copy, because I know some of these numbers, once I get going, are going to be impossible to read on that screen, so you should have a hard copy at your desk of these slides as well. So as Carol mentioned, I'm just here to go over the results of the 2018-2019 audit. And starting with these slides here, the first one is the trends of fund balance over the last five years. And just kind of looking at last year compared to this year, you'll notice that most of them decreased, with the exception of just a few. And kind of the theme there is, this is really related to the timing of the tax payments. And I'll go into this a little bit more a little bit later, but it's going to show up on just about every slide, and it's impacted your financial results in a major way this year. So that is why most of these fund balances are down, except for the few that don't get any tax payments. So as I mentioned, I'll talk about that in just a couple more slides here in a little bit more detail. This is the Ed Fund expenditures, actual compared to budget. And as you'll notice, overall, the actual expenditures did compare favorable to budget. There were certainly pockets of areas that were over budget, but on a combined basis, the entire Ed Fund, you actually did come in a little bit under budget. Okay, now this is the slide where it will really jump out to everyone. So this is general revenue and special revenue funds. So this is basically everything except for debt service and then some of the capital projects funds. But this local line here, that's 4.9 million under budget for actual revenue, has to do with the timing of these tax payments. So for all of us that live in Champaign County, we know that we got our bills laid and we all had an extra month to make that first payment. Well, how that impacted you is then if the funds weren't there from the taxpayers, then obviously they couldn't be dispersed to you. For these financial results, we pick up anything that was received by you, the district, by August 30th every year. Typically, you've received two payments at that point. This year, you have not received that second payment until, I don't even know when you did get it, September sometime. So we were not able to pick it up in here. So what that means for you, and I think Carol might have reported a slightly different number than what I came up with, we used a little different estimate, but I basically took what your potential to receive would be and took it times what you had received percentage-wise this time last year, essentially. And I calculated you would have probably about 12 more million dollars that you would have received into these financial results that you did not receive due to the timing of that tax payment, which, you know, obviously had, you know, you had zero control over any of that. I think Carol had reported about 8.4 million. So somewhere, both of them are estimates, but somewhere in there, you would have received a neighborhood of eight to 12 million dollars additional, and that would have affected this local sources line. Now, the state sources, that's a little different. That's the pre-K at-risk program that just received less funding this year. And then the federal unfavorable to budget was just due to the timing of sometimes the way you budget and receive those taxes or those federal grant payments. Those are pretty common, but the local one for sure jumps out. It also jumps out on this slide, as you can see, this is the working cash fund cash balance. And typically, throughout the year, the working cash fund will make loans to the other funds, and then once the tax payments are received, then those loans are repaid to some degree. Obviously, this year, the funds were not available for any of the funds, and so those were not repaid. So you can see that the cash balance, which usually had run around 2 million, was down to $30,000 at the end of the year.
That's how close we were to going out for tax anticipation warrants, as you recall, which is why we prepared for that. We were that close. And one other thing I wanted to point out, we checked today, and even as of today, we're still 1.9, 2 million dollars behind where we were last year at this time in tax receipts. So we're still behind, haven't received, we're like one payment behind at this point. Just the amount of money is not coming in, so we're hoping that's going to get caught up, though. We wanted to check just to see where we were today, and that's where we are.
And that's all local property taxes?
Mm-hmm. I think they're still processing receipts that they received in September, and they're still processing.
And we received a payment October 9th, so we got a one, we have one recently, but it's still 2 million dollars behind.
I have my taxes taken automatically from a checking account, even though they were due on the 1st of September, that wasn't taken out until the third week of September, even though that's just a computer transaction, and they probably, it probably wasn't part of the check that you got on October 9th, as an example.
Okay. I just wanted to update you, that's kind of where we are today.
So then another, I guess, thing this kind of means for you is, on the annual financial report that's filed with ISBE, it calculates kind of a financial profile number. That obviously was significantly down from last year, mainly due to the, part of the calculation is an expense-to-revenue ratio that last year was 1.05, that factored into the score, this year was .7. But we did kind of run a calculation today and had you received the extra, I only used 8 million as an example, that was the low end of what Carol had calculated. I put that in there, and that would have jumped you up to an overall score of 3.7 as compared to 3, where you're at now, and 3.45 last year. So you actually would have had a better financial profile score than last year, but now you have a much worse financial profile score than last year. So obviously, all the districts in Champaign County will be in the same boat, so I don't know, you mentioned the Regional Office of Education potentially reaching out to ISBE and making them aware of the situation, because like I said, certainly it's nothing to do with anything you all are doing.
And what would 3.7 have done our rating?
Recognition versus warning.
Right now, we're at warning.
In theory, would that rating have any effect on, say, we had to do bonding for whatever reason?
I don't think it, no.
I don't think it is. I think it's a score that ISBE came up with years ago, just to kind of show where districts were and-
But it's certainly public information that they're going to have.
Yeah, it's going to be, they'll use it to compare us to other districts, but every district in Champaign County is going to have the same effect. So that's why we're going to work with ROE to see if the superintendent can do something through ISBE for the county to kind of say, hey, we're all going through this, is there some waiver we can get or some, you know, reconciliation to make sure that we don't get dinged for this, because it's going to look bad. But I don't think it will impact bonds, especially if you can explain it. You know, we can definitely show that this was just a timing problem, and it's not something that's happened before.
Is there silver lining that it would affect the needs-based state formula?
No, I already checked that, too.
Yeah, unfortunately. So on a happier note, no new footnotes, no new accounting standards, no past adjustments. Any adjustments we did make with the audit related to the whole cash-to accrual conversion that we do every year, nothing that was in error. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, no single audit findings. The FR will get uploaded tomorrow, and we also issued an adult ed report that we do every year, so. Any questions? That's pretty much the theme, that kind of, as you saw, affected pretty much every slide that we went through.
Board members, any questions? This is relative consistent with what Carol's been talking to us about for months and warning us, so no surprises.
Good. Okay.
All right, thank you. Carol, that folks' place is the full report, if you wish to take it home and read it. But usually Carol would like to have these back, because there's various grants and so forth that require original copies submitted, so board members, please feel free to take it home and go through it. But if you do so, please bring it back.
John, before we leave the BKD altogether, could I ask about the status of the, I mean, I mentioned this to Carol earlier, about the BKD Integra Report, the Fraud and Ethics Service that we approved in June? I mean, it's kind of related.
Yeah, we did just have our implementation call, I think, end of September, September 30th, with BKD, so it was postponed a little while just because of transitioning, and actually one of the people that I'd been emailing to set it up ended up leaving the firm and didn't get the email. So we got detained or delayed a little bit because of that, as well as now I think they're to the point where we've sent them all the things they needed after that implementation meeting. So we're just waiting on them to just get a setup and get the flyers out, because basically it's, once they flip that switch, we'll be ready to go.
And then we'll come-
Myself, Tori, and Angie, us three are the reported, where the reports are going to go to is what we decided. So any calls that come in will be reported immediately to us three at the same time.
And we can share that as an administrative report, once we get some of the flyers, you can see what they look like before they go out to the schools.
Great. Because I thought there was some kind of training that was going to happen, too, so people knew, you know, how to report and what kinds of things to report and how, you know, right, district-wide.
Yeah, I think they have a video.
They have video, like screencasts, kind of like our staff are used to seeing.
It's pretty, well, actually, they-
Very basic.
I think actually it's all by phone, because the person, they can do it online or they can do it by phone, but they said they find most people do it by phone, is what they told us. The majority of them come in by phone, and then they put them in the system, and then they go out. So I think everything goes to them first, and then it gets sent to us within a pretty quick timeline.
So maybe like in the next month or two, it might be rolled out?
Oh, yeah, I would think so.
Oh, even sooner, okay.
It didn't seem like it would take that long.
To set us up.
We were trying to get the flyers, they had shown different templates that we could use, and we wanted to see if we could get all of them to kind of choose which ones we wanted. Since we did pay for the premium membership, we get access to a lot of things to get this started and set up, so we're hoping, we haven't got a response back on whether we could use all of those templates, but then we just have to kind of come up with our flyer and then get it posted and notify everybody that it's going to be up and running, so.
Great. Okay, thank you.
All right, is that it, Peggy?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're ready to move forward to action items, then? Okay. We have a consent agenda this evening. On the consent agenda are the minutes of the September 17th and the business meeting and the October 1st study session. We do have bills and checks, education fund bills in the amount of 550,000, operations and maintenance fund bills in the amount of 229,000, transportation fund bills in the amount of 105,000, working cash bonds, 28,000, tort, 144,000, life safety levy in the amount of 82,000, payroll in the amount of 4.4 million, and Urbana Adult Education bills in the amount of 105,000. We have no inter-fund loans this evening. We do have personnel items, and I did not notice anything that deserved special mention, and Angie's agreeing, all right. Also approval of hazardous areas for transportation, and these are the same as they have been for the last several, probably for the last decade or at least. Renewal of the MTD contract and resolution authorizing and directing the sale or disposal of personal property, which is primarily the normal culling of library books at King School. And a new activity account for, believe it or not, class of 2023. All ready. All right. Is there anyone who wishes to have any consent agenda item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, a motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Exum?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. President Demmett?
Yes. Motion is carried. We're now ready for individual action items. And the first one there is the list of gifts, and I've asked Paul to read the list of gifts this evening.
So Tepper Electric from Champaign donated a sensory lap lamp valued at $550 to Urbana Middle School. CU Autism Network donated a platform swing, padded panels for sensory room, and a pod swing with attachments valued at $355 to Urbana Middle School. Jubal Kroger and Renee Antrozio donated $100 to UHS Habitat for Humanities Club. The following donated a total of $2,460 to the Ron Garretts Memorial Fund. Cindy K. Kraft, Janet and Kevin Masters, Larry and Judy Johnson, Wayne and Barbara Mammon, Glentetta Rowe, Dwayne and Marjorie Ari, Mickey Martin, Judith Ripper, Dorothy Wiley, Margaret and Avery Merriman, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Glenn and Leslie Savage, Gregory Beverly Obricht, Robert and Alan Hostetler, Randy and Carol Baker, Mary Beth Norris, Darlene Curry, Jeff and Julie Sloan, Christine Sherrick, Stuart Black, Mary Lovell, Laura Heistand, Haber and Robert Haber, Harold and Vanetta Dean, Kimberlyn Fo, Merritt, Michael and Debbie Merriman, Joan Shepherd, Christine Bedford, Joan and Gary Kling, Victoria, Paul Gordon, and numerous cast donations. Laborers Local 703 Retiree Council donated eight $25 Meyer gift cards to be used to assist with the needs of district families. The following donated a total of $2,075 to the Urbana High School cheer team. Alvarez Landscaping, Max Auto Recycling, I-Force Cheer, New Vision Church, Smile Doctors, Gallo Dance Studio, Zeebo Zebby, Keller Williams Realty, Clarity Pools, Tia's Chicken Box, and TK's Cheesecake, Hula Hands, Something You Salon and Spa, Long's Garage, El Progreso, Garbanzo Mediterranean Food, Top Star Training and Candy Company, Hans Dental, Carpet Advantage, and Jackson Chiropractic. The Vineyard Church donated $1,000 to the King Elementary Backpack Drive sponsored by Pietro Cafe. Bernadette Nelson donated more than 30 animal costumes for student use to Urbana early at childhood school. And Deborah Chu donated $300 to the Urbana High School Theater.
That's the list of gifts for this evening. A motion to accept and send thank you notes would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We have no call at this point in time for any future special or executive meetings, so we're ready for the superintendent's report.
All right. So Lori's going to pick that up. It's all right there. It was awesome. There you go. All right. All right. You ready? Were you in it again, Lori? No. No. It worked, girl. Thanks. Sorry. We are compiling photos from the week, and again, just like we did for opening day, we'll send out a link with an album that will have photos from the pep assembly, from the parade, and from the game. This picture is of our alumni that were inducted into the Hall of Fame. Brandy Carroll, Letitia Dove, Jennifer Hill, and they're in this order, Mackenzie White, who's currently a teacher, combo primary teacher at Yankee Ridge. They were all inducted into the 2019 Hall of Fame. This is a photo of them receiving their plaques with their family members at Friday night's game. Mr. Williams, Director of PR and Marketing, will be highlighting a story about the inductees. School Safety Week, so we, John mentioned that we've had some communications over the weekend around the drills that are going to be happening this week, so I know families have reached out to their principals. Hopefully, all those emails were answered in a timely manner. We'll be going out in collaboration with UPD. So just to reassure everyone, we're not, you know, this is not a opportunity to alarm or frighten anyone, it is just an opportunity, just like fire drills, you know, you drill what you do. So we have several fire drills a year, we have several tornado drills a year, and this is our opportunity to practice our intruder drills. So I will be going out, Ms. Norton will be going out, we'll have an officer with both of us as we walk through the buildings. So I just want to have everyone understand this is going to be very developmentally appropriate. And again, this is our baseline drill, we'll do another one later in the year. So we'll do one in the fall and one in the spring, and hopefully we'll see some growth in between both drills. Most of the emails that we've received, you know, this is just regular business here in Urbana, we've been doing this for years, have been new families who are new to the community and just trying to understand what is this and what is it all about. So we completely understand. So if you continue to have more questions, just reach out to your principal. Academic Monogram is tomorrow at, oh, and I fixed this slide, but it's not updated. It is in Oscar Adams Gym tomorrow at 7:00, so I think most of you have already RSVP'd, so thank you if you're available, we'll see you there. This is one of our student spotlights, so you probably need to go back, okay. Go back to the, Derek Peterson is coming. And yeah, this is the old slide, yes, so we fixed this. Derek Peterson is not a UHS student, sorry. He is going to be coming and working with our UHS students on October 24th. He is a professional development provider who has worked around the country in engaging student voices. I know Dr. Berenson's back there, so he is going to be coordinating two sessions at the high school, a large group session then a smaller group session breakout with Mr. Peterson. And Mr. Peterson will also be here the evening- And Mr. Peterson will also be here the evening of the 24th to work with the board around how we are going to incorporate student voice as a student board member. Anything you want to add about that, John?
There is a Derek Peterson who's an alum of the school who probably just had a heart attack when he saw that slide, if he happens to be watching. But no, I have had special, I've had the opportunity on two or three occasions now to listen to Mr. Peterson deliver a seminar at National School Board Association meetings regarding student voices and so, and how they, best practices and how to have that happen at a board level. So I'm very much looking forward to hearing that on the 24th. I will be in attendance at, throughout the day. He has asked that there be students and adults in these sessions, and I'll be there to emphasize the board's commitment to this process. And if any one other board member wishes to also be a part of that, please let us know. And then we're all together at 6:00 PM on that evening.
So one other person says, John, we'll be there. One other person could join us at 9:00 o'clock or at 1:30.
So I guess I was wrong. There is a special meeting scheduled.
Yes.
Before the next regular meeting, which is the night of the 6th, the night of the 24th at 6:00.
With Derek Peterson, yes. Speaking of student voice, this is Banan Garada. She's a UHS junior and she will be our upcoming student highlight, so spotlight. So look for that later this week. So Mr. Williams will have that up and you'll get to learn about some of the great things that Banan has been doing with FEMA, and she works with some other organizations outside of the house, high school. And that is it for me.
Any questions for our superintendent? We do have to do something with FOIA? We have to at least read.
Read them. Do I read them?
Yes.
Okay.
Or you can have Laura read it, whichever.
I can read them. FOIA requests received and fulfilled. Smart, Procore, variety of purchase orders, purchase dates, line item details, line item quantity, line item price, and vendor item number. And that is it for the FOIAs for this meeting.
Filed and fulfilled.
Filed and fulfilled.
All right. Board reports this evening.
Board members that are attending the joint conference, if you are planning to go to a pre-conference, please let me know so we can get you registered before they fill out.
Other board, no board reports tonight?
Well, I mean, one thing that came across in our correspondence was the discussion of the issues before the General Assembly conference related to whether or not the ISBE as a body should petition the legislature to change the laws revolving arming teachers. And the question was like, how did the representative from this body vote in last year's General Assembly? And that was Anne, who represented the board, and voted against all of that. And they wanted to know who, but there's a discussion here. Brenda's going to be our delegate going into the upcoming General Assembly meeting, so.
So regarding teachers bearing arms?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we hadn't voted formally in this body on a resolution whether or not this supports that initiative, but I mean, it's been past practice, this, we voted against it.
Yes. It is our normal practice that we provide guidance, but we give our representative. A lot of stuff happens on the floor that, as things move through. And so we have given some wide latitude to our representative who has had the opportunity to have a feel for this, for the, how we feel as a board, which is why Anne voted no last year. And this will be one of many items that will be voted on in the, on the floor of the delegate, delegates' floor for the school board conference. So I think you're receiving input at this point in time. We don't ironclad tie the hands of our representative because things happen on the floor. And we want our representative to have the opportunity to act and react accordingly to the actions as the business flows on the floor in a rapid, rapid order. But I think the sense of the board, in response to the email, the sense of the board is that we do not approve our wish to condone the practice of teachers of being armed in our schools. We're opposed to that.
Absolutely.
And Brenda's well aware of that.
Right, there's actually 12 new resolutions that I'll be talking to other board members about before I make our decision as a district because I am a delegate. But it is a, all of us have input on the board about this. And I do listen to the community and staff, of course, about different things also. We have five amended existing positions also to vote on and one reaffirmation of existing positions. So there's quite a few things. And just like John said, sometimes, they usually try to have a time limit, but sometimes not all of these are able to be met at that time. We try to get through as many as possible. But sometimes certain issues take a lot longer in the delegate assembly than what they plan. So they do have like a time limit and everything, but many districts are able to speak their mind.
Thank you for doing that, Brenda.
Brenda, can you give us a sample of what your list is so the public will know that we're not just kind of going up there with one thing in mind? And like you said, you've got about 12 there. If you'll just read off a couple of them for the, for general knowledge of what's going to be coming up. Because a lot of, some of these are new and we've had the repeats over the years, too.
Some of the newer resolutions are student safety, business enterprises minority-owned, school safety grant program, school district police force, background checks, substitute teachers, school safety, traffic zones, school board elections, seating of new members, school board elections, swearing-in, school board elections, terms, school board member compensation, charter school renewal of charters, charter schools at-risk students. Those are the new resolutions that we'll be voting on to either support them or to oppose. The amended existing are about prevailing wage, educational programs, state authorized charter school funding, funding special education programs. And then the reaffirmation is standardized test procedures and student assessment.
So wide, you can see it's a wide scope of topics.
I mean, if listeners wanted to know more about, because those are just, that's just a sentence in each case, if they wanted to know more about what's embedded in the school safety or the, you know, the variety of things, where would they go to get more information?
Probably on the website, isn't it?
Probably the ISB website, yes.
ISB.com and then maybe into resolutions?
Org.
I'm sorry, ISB.org and then I think there's something resolutions or.
Right.
Okay. Any other board reports this evening? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.